Will come to order, please. Want to welcome everyone to the work session of the Caroline County Planning Commission for January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Time is five P M. I'll do some quick introductions as we get going. To my far left is Mr. J D Young from Reedy Church. To my left is Dr. Carol Horton of Port Royal. I'm Bob Schwartz of the Bowling Green District. To my immediate right is Mr. Purcell Minor, representing Mattupanai. To his right is Mr. George Weaver, representing Madison. And unfortunately, our representative from Western Carolina, Mr. Richard Williams, cannot be with us tonight due to a circumstance beyond his control. We have Mr. Craig Pennington, our county planner. Mr. Leon Hughes, the Director of Planning. John Voight and David Satter are our I T specialists keeping us online this evening. And with that, Mr. Hughes.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. As you stated, this is a work session to talk about the Carmel Church growth area. In your packet, there was a memo that I provided you. All that memo was to prepare for tonight's work session and on the potential expansion of the Carmel Church growth area. It aimed to offer some insights on the existing Carmel Church growth area, outlining its goals, its policies and future development within the Carmel Church community area. Additionally, the memo informs about recent amendments, particularly the introduction of the planned innovation, research and technology, land use designation and addresses the growing interest in the area from developers. A little background on the Carmel Church Community Growth Area Plan. It was adopted in two thousand and seven. It has a planning horizon of twenty to twenty-five years, and we're in year seventeen of that horizon. It was developed through a collaborative process involving citizens, a citizens committee, the Carmel Church Citizens Planning Advisory, or CPAC, which was appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And the CPAC's goals were included establishing community boundaries, guidelines, guiding the future direction of the Carmel Church area and creating a community identity. That planning process involved community meetings, included a citizen survey, and it was facilitated by representatives from the Virginia Citizens Planning Education Association. The Carmel Church Community Plan is comprised of six sections. Community design, land use and future land use, resource protection, public facilities and economic development, as well as transportation. Each section in the plan has a ends with a list of goals, action strategies and an implementation plan. In the community design section of the plan, it focuses on retaining the core of the Carmel Church Village, preserving residential neighborhoods and establishing a village core. It identifies traditional neighborhood design as the preferred theme for new residential development within the planning area. The land use and future land use section establishes the CCGA boundary and emphasizes growth ma- a growth management strategy that directs new growth to areas with facilities provided, so water and sewer services and transportation network. And it recognizes the potential for significant non-residential development and economic opportunities due to the strategic strategic location of Carmel Church along Interstate ninety-five and Route One. The Resource Protection Area section of the plan formulates policies to protect natural resources like forest, farmland, groundwater, streams, rivers, heritage and history. It emphasizes the importance of preserving agricultural, the agricultural economy and environmentally sensitive resources in the county. So amendments to the community plan most recently included the introduction of the PERT land use designation in September of two thousand and twenty-three for technology and compatible industrial uses. There were two areas identified in the county. One up on Route six oh six and the northern portion of the county, and then a nor- area in the north eastern or northwestern area of the count of the Carmel Church Community Growth Area. And if you look on the screen, there is identified by an A in the purple on the screen. Since then, well, prior to the adoption of those areas, there were proposals to expand the Carmel Church Community Growth Area to the west outside of its existing boundary. There has been significant interest from developers in the CCGA for industrial and technology uses. Recently, a citizen has approached the county of and proposed the introduction of an additional one thousand acres into the PERT area near MCD. Luck Development is also has submitted an application for a comp plan amendment that includes one thousand one hundred and ninety-six acres from rural preservation to industrial, and they will file a companion rezoning request along with that. In addition, there is currently a rezoning application for a data center project. And what on that screen is the northern portion of A, which is identified in the community plan as the village core area. So the area directly behind Flying J off of two oh seven is a subject parcel, subject area for that proposal. So current demographics in the just within the Carmel Church Community Growth Area, the population is about two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five people. That's a forty-three percent increase since two thousand and five, when there were twenty-five hundred people in that area. There are one thousand one hundred and seven housing units. The population density is at a hundred and forty-five persons per square mile. And the average household size is two point eight seven persons. The total households in the growth area are one thousand forty-one. The area being considered for expansion, correct? Is to the west of the existing boundary. So if you're looking at the screen, you see the purple area on the western side, and then the area outlined in orange was the subject of expansion along the west for consideration as a PERT area also. Up in the eastern, north eastern portion, you also see an orange area, and that area encompasses where citizens have expressed interest in adding to that PERT area. The striped area on the screen has been designated for PERT also. The area being considered for expansion west of the current boundary is on approximately one thousand one hundred and sixty-one acres. This is one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five acres less than the original proposal that included two thousand eight hundred and ninety-six acres. There are approximately, this area is approximately four thousand three hundred and ninety-eight feet or eight tenths of a mile west of the current Carmel Church Carmel Church Growth Area Boundary at Long Creek. As a landmark, Table Road would be where the area starts in orange, not the strip along Jericho Road, but where it starts to create a polygon there, that would be essentially Table Road as a landmark for people just to understand exactly what we're talking about. So that request for expansion was driven by a rezoning application. There is a five hundred K V power line that runs through the middle of the proposed area. However, water sewers will have, water service will have to be extended to the area, which is approximately two point four miles from Route One. As I noted, there was a rezoning case that precipitated or facilitated the request to expand this area and for PERT. And the Commission did not recommend approval of that request. That request has yet to have a public hearing with the Board of Supervisors. So we noted that that request did limit the uses that could go on the area if it was rezoned. That rezoning case includes about eight hundred and fifty-five acres, and their properties did limit the uses that could be on the property. I think that's important to note because if an area gets rezoned to PERT, there are additional uses within that zoning category that could be developed on the property beyond data center. So it's important to note if an area gets rezoned, that there are options for additional uses. So one of the, that's kind of an overview of the PERT and the history of the PERT. What I like to do is kind of walk through a couple of maps and kind of show you just a little, a few more features. Yeah, that's a good one. So this was the original proposal to expand the Carmel Church Growth Boundary and create a PERT area. And so the original proposal, like I said, was two thousand eight hundred and ninety-six acres and included one hundred and twenty-four parcels. And that is everything in the red to the west of the existing boundary there. So the stripes and the dotted areas were identified as future PERT areas. On the other side of the growth area, the striped area was also identified as PERT. And at the same meeting or the on the same time, the Commission and the Board did identify the village core area, as is noted in the plan, as a UDA, an urban development area in the center there along Route One. So which is more commonly known as Carmel Church Station. Let's go to the. So when we talk about the the PERT area and the rationale for that we use to develop these areas, the intent was to create areas that would have limited impact on population and not have negative consequences if data centers were developed. So this is a population map, and each dot represents five people. But you can see in the MCD PERT area, there's limited population area within that red boundary, which is the current boundary of the PERT area. And then the orange area off to the right would be the area of proposed expansion. And there again, you can see there's limited population in that area as well. And then the proposed area to the left, as you can see, there's a population, some population in that area, a little more than than the other. What is also to note is both of these areas have power utility available. So the yellow line that runs to the top of the screen in the area on the west represents the power line. And then in the area commonly called the MCD area, the yellow line that runs towards the top of the screen that runs along the black line and red line. And then again, over the area, that's a power line also. So that area has the availability of power and water is a little bit closer. Right now, that area to the west is about two point four miles west of Route One to the west. So that kind of summarizes, you know, this area and that there was being considered before. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. I can imagine there are a number of questions you may have. One thing I'd also like to show you is, can you go to the future? Oh, one thing I didn't point out, I'm sorry. So when I mentioned that Luck Development was also can, has filed a comp plan amendment, the area south of Jericho Road, and I don't have a pointer. So the area in the southwestern quadrant of the intersection of Jericho Road and Route One is about eleven hundred and ninety-six acres. Luck has filed an application for a complaint amendment to redesignate that area for industrial uses. That will come along in a separate application and will have a separate hearing. But essentially, they are also asking for a little expansion of the PERT area or the Carmel Church Growth Boundary Area because they have parcels that are on the growth area boundary that sex those parcels. And so if those parcels are rezoned, you would have a growth boundary line that would bisect parcels that would have essentially industrial zoning. That line could move out a couple of hundred feet and then still run along Long Creek and essentially would be an environmentally sensitive area because of the RPA and RMAs that are along that area. So in the plan where it talks about resource protection area in this area in the white is what is identified as is resource protection, that is not a designation that means that land should not be developed. The plan talks about that area being land for transitional development. The other thing I think is important to note about development in the Carmel Church Growth Area is that it talks about using a transect style development where you have your more intense development more to the core, and then as you move out, you have less intense development. And so over the, you know, past seventeen years, that is essentially kind of been the growth pattern within the Carmel Church Growth Area. One thing to note on this map is if you identify Route two oh seven, south of two oh seven over to Route One and essentially north of two oh seven up beyond the railroad tracks, the existing development pattern is for industrial development. If you've seen, that is where the world-class distribution warehouse facility is. There's a new three hundred and seventy-five foot, three hundred and seventy five thousand square foot building going up now. That is where the McKesson facility is. That's where the furniture distribution facilities are. There's also additional land along Luther Glen Road that's being identified for potential another million square foot warehouse. So the current development pattern is essentially following what the plan identified to occur over the the course of time. And like I noted, this plan has a twenty to twenty-five year horizon, so we're still within that planning horizon. And the, this area is developing as was intended in the plan. The area north of Route two oh seven, above the blue there, which is identified for residential and limited residential uses, that white area is also identified as a potential growth area or rural preservation on the plan. But as I noted, that does not mean it's not to be developed. It just means it would serve as a transition out to the more rural areas. So there is some additional room for development within the growth area and as well as you can see to the southeast along the eastern boundary. Now, I would say as you get there, there's, there is dense development within the area there where the cursor is, you know, that's residential development there along Luther Glen Road. And I would imagine it would be wise that the railroad track, you know, at this point be kind of the boundary for industrial development along Luther Glen Road before it starts to encroach, you know, on, have significant encroachment on residential properties along with the Glen Road. So that's kind of how this area is developed and over the course of time. And like I said, it is developing in accordance with the, as the plan has identified. And being adopted in two thousand and seven, you can see how the evolution of Caroline is occurring in this area. I just wanted to make that point. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Commissioners, anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions? Mr. Hughes, we visited this situation last year. It was a unanimous vote by this commission, six to zero, to deny expansion of the growth area of West of Jericho Road. Apparently, one or two members of the Board of Supervisors didn't appreciate or didn't want to hear that recommendation, so it was kicked back to us again for further consideration. Am I correct so far?
That is correct.
Okay. We have conducted site visits to this location. I enjoyed meeting Mr. Thompson. Nice gentleman. I would not be completely opposed to a data center growing or being placed onto the property where he is, where he he designated the eight hundred and some acres. As it was put to me, they intend to use approximately a hundred and thirty acres of that total acreage. There was something that I, that Mr. Thompson said to me as we were exiting that piqued my curiosity a little bit. And I have since found that not only does Mr. Thompson want to put in the data center that he proposes, but the remaining land potentially could be used also by, shall we say governmental agencies for data center. Now, I don't care whether it's a governmental agency or a conglomerate of other companies, that matters not to me. What does matter to me is that we wind up with a complex of eight hundred acres of data center in that area. What's going to happen, and I'm just going to great gaze into a little crystal ball, is not only the property that Mr. Thompson owns, but the adjoining landowners, and some of them have already expressed interest in being included into a PERT, are going to want to jump up on the bandwagon. And it's quite honestly, it's because the developers are offering exorbitant amounts of money for the land. Now, I don't care for someone making a profit, making money. That's capitalism, that's what this country's developed on. But when you throw the amount of money to sway people, that personally sits in my craw, be that as it may, my craw doesn't count, and I realize that. We heard from numerous citizens who were in opposition to this. And I love the phrase, we the people, because this commissioner will hear the people. We we sit up there and we we get feedback from the public. Not only do we listen, but we hear. Initially, I I told Mr. Thompson that if it was only his property that was going to be subject to the PERT designation, that I would probably not be opposed. I I didn't say probably, I said I wouldn't be in opposition to that. But I see it mushrooming from the singular development that he wants to do. It mushrooms onto the property that he has, and it's, let's face it, it's going to wind up mushrooming, mushrooming out to the side. I previously stated my position on going west of Jericho Road, and I've got to stand by that. Now, other commissioners may feel differently, that's why we have a panel, because everyone can't have the same opinion. And that's why I rest with this, just to be upfront.
Mr. Chair, can I just add something to?
Yes, sir.
Kind of what you were alluding to. So one of the things, I mean, Caroline has traditionally been a strong comp plan community.
I'm sorry.
Caroline has traditionally been a strong comp plan community. So you you see, this plan was adopted in two thousand and seven. And so following the plan has allowed development to occur as it as it was intended. At some point, there's going to be a need to expand the growth boundary. And I think, given the amount of interest that we are seeing right now, we've identified an area that is adjacent to the existing boundary that we identify for expansion. And so everything is, from my perspective, in due time.
Yes, sir. And I agree with you. Comp plan i- is a plan, and plans are subject to to change and amendment. We've already designated certain areas where we we have designated for PERT. And in the historical facts on what you provided to us, him cross something that I I think is very appropriate. And it says in part, quote, and makes it clear that this is the appropriate development plan in this area of Carmel Church. Meaning not Jericho Road area. And I I I'm not trying to get into a battle of wits or words, but you or anyone else, sir, but it was inappropriate that the plan that we have is appropriate, the growth development in Carmel Church plan that we have is appropriate. Conversely, going west of Jericho Road at this time, to me, means that it's inappropriate. That's my interpretation, right, wrong or indifferent, that that's just my interpretation. But.
So I I do have some thoughts on this area too. Um, it it is our major development area. It does need to expand over time. I do, I do probably like Mr. Schwartz want to make sure we don't do too much too fast because of our limited resources. We operate, this county operates off of either a well in your yard or some type of deep water well that a community can draw off of. That would take a lot of water if this whole area were to suddenly develop, would take a lot of water, which we don't have right now. I know is that there's some future consideration of drawing off the rapid panic. That's going to take a lot of funding to get and a lot more red tape to get water out of the rapid panic. Has come a long way, especially since the area that we've been told most likely that Caroline can draw from is is that area where Moss Mac Manor is, and that's a long ways. And then once you put in a water line, of course, you know, developers are going to want to tap into it along the whole way. So I want to be, you know, cautious about that. I just don't want to do too much too fast. I know we need need to allow for development for this area. There's already a train station slated for this station, I mean, for this area. If it ever, I mean, it's been voted on, not by this panel, but by by a previous group. I don't know that it will ever happen, it just depends on, you know, people are for using the train. But there's, I mean, it's a development area, but I just don't want to do, I want to take it piece by piece. I want it to be driven by the people of Caroline, not the people who want to come in and develop Caroline. We do need some development there that will give us big tax money. We do need some development there that will give us big tax money. We don't really need a lot more housing because whenever we do housing, we don't get enough taxes really to support schools, roads, you know, providing water and, and infrastructure. But we do, I agree, we do need some big development there. Hidden in the woods preferably, that will, you know, provide big taxes for us so we can provide adequate infrastructure. And that's my thoughts.
I understand, but I think we're, we're trying to be soothsayers here. I know it's our responsibility to try and look into the future and determine what we think might or may not happen. I just think at this particular stage, I'm more interested in just that one project that we have to deal with right now. And I would like to be able to just control that one project. It's nice to say we can think about these other situations and other areas. But I think right now, I'm concerned about that one parcel that's there. That there is a client who wants to build on that piece of property. That will definitely benefit this county. And I think for that reason, we should just, we limit our concentration to that piece of property only. And I understand that there could be other changes that will happen in the future. But I think right-
Talking about the property far, three and a half miles from ninety-five? Or are you talking about the property close to ninety-five?
The one that's close to ninety-five, right up at the top of the tray, tracks. Okay, because fifteen years ago, I was involved when we, we talked about the train station and everything else, and the fellow government said, yes, we'll go. Because it was outside the explosion zone, they wanted that area. They were wanting to commit, they were going to build three hundred thousand, they were going to build three million square feet of office space and so forth and so on. Right now, I'm just concerned about one piece of property. That one piece of property that I think could be developed to the benefit of this county. And I would like to just judge it on that, that only. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may speak on this.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know this has been a tough situation for all of us to get everyone involved. Our families have had, um, all of our, everyone in the county, families have had farmland and in the fu- in the past, and those farmlands, a lot of those farmlands are no longer available or no longer working. I always look at time and opportunity. Jericho Road, uh, data center that we're talking about, and, and the future development of that area, it's outlined in the comprehensive review plan as future development. When is the future? Are we going to wait thirty years? To embark upon the future, or we're going to do it now? Time and opportunity is what, um, works right along with capitalism. So with that being said, that particular parcel that we're talking about, there are not many uses for that particular parcel that benefit the county. With, I know we have opposition. A lot of the opposition that we have comes from outside the county and those that are not in the district, that don't affect them. It will only benefit them, the way I look at it. I look at the NIMBY situation, not in my backyard. I don't necessarily believe in that. Because if this opportunity was in someone else's backyard, and it was a good opportunity, they'd be all over it. This opportunity has, for this particular district, it has. It would give it the opportunity to continue to grow, and we meet, we need to continue to manage it as a county, as officials in the county, and we can certainly do that. Uh, the comprehensivity plan will be up soon to review and change. So I think, I, I, I still think that we should look at this constructively, intensively, and look at it and say, what's going to be best for the citizens and what's going to be best for the county? Now, with that being said, you know, I respect all of the citizens, and I respect their beliefs, their comments, all of that. That's the reason I said on the last vote, on, on the last, when this came before us again, is that I'll be the first to say I was uneducated on the previous vote. As to most of my constituents that I've spoken with, most people in the district had no clue about what was to happen on Jericho Road. So therefore, I reached out to say, let's let the citizens come forth and make a decision about what it is that they want, and give us an opportunity to make a better judgment call or vote, uh, as you would have it, based upon what the citizens want. You have individuals that hide behind veils, that send out letters and won't sign them, but then they will say to us, uh, they'll put my name on it and say JD Young, contact him, and that's fine. But stand up and be a citizen in the county, and if-
I'm sorry, excuse me? Anymore outbursting, I'll ask you to leave.
Yeah. So I respect all citizens and their opposition, their support, I respect it all. But again, I don't want the propaganda to be in the district, and I can't stop it, but the propaganda that goes into the district that is skewed and not necessarily the truth. We need to inform our citizens better, is all I'm trying to say, basically, and let our citizens talk to us and tell us what they want.
I would agree with you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question. So if we're talking about the expansion to the west out of Jericho Road, and, and we've already mentioned that a, a data center would like to go in there, hidden back in the woods, i- is there any way, other than us providing water to that data center, they could drill their own well on that property? Or there is a new technology where data centers don't have to cool with water? They can be air-cooled? I mean, that might solve some of the issues, because I think my biggest concern is getting water to that property, a- and also, um, bringing too much development, you know? It's a big data center, it could be hidden there, it could bring a lot of tax money. That's the pros. The con is, one of the big cons at least, is the, the water situation.
So, so Ms. Horton, I, I won't speak in specifics relative to that, that case, because that case is still at the board, but I will speak to what the plan says. And the, the plan clearly says that development should occur where the infrastructure is in place. So to run water, you'd have to run water, but let's say it's at Route One, so you're going to run water two point four miles beyond the growth area to serve that facility, or any facility out there. And so you're not talking about, let's talk in generalities. We're saying that this would be an area that we'd want to see, or would allow future development to occur. That is clearly contrary with the plan as identified, because there's available land within the growth area, and we've identified areas within the growth area that can serve that same use. And so it's not, you know, there are, there's a lot of interest from in this area for industrial as well as technology type uses. Hence, luck development, looking at, you know, developing the area in the purple there that is within the growth area. So I would just caution that, you know, once you make an amendment like this, you know, what, what's to prevent someone from coming along and say on the northwestern portion of the growth area, we're in the blue hatched area, and saying, oh, well, someone has offered up or is willing to sell large chunks of land in that area, and so I, we, we want to build there. You know, we've got a willing seller, we can afford to extend the utilities, so let's go there. And then, you know, you've kind of set the stage for potentially additional pecking away at the plan. And so I think-
I think this also sets the stage, though, for pecking away at the plan.
Well, that's the point I'm making.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think, as I stated earlier, Caroline has traditionally been a strong comp plan community, and, you know, if you look at the seventeen years this plan has been in place, if you look at the development pattern as it is occurring, it is occurring in conformance with the way this plan was developed. And, you know, I don't think Caroline is in a position of having to, I say be media, for lack of a better word, but there are opportunities for development. Like I said, we have interest in other industries, I mean, I'm, as well as data centers, that's why we identify the area in the northwest, the MCD perk area for development. Because it is in with the growth area, it has, it is in close proximity to utilities. And so if we're going to follow the plan, then we follow the plan. Now, that is purely the, the board's and the commission's choice, but I just offer you those thoughts as a professional planner, looking at the plan that was adopted and the development pattern that is in conformance right now with that plan.
And can I ask a question of our attorney? What happens if we cannot provide adequate water in an area that we've zoned for growth for this industry? I mean, are we responsible once we?
Well, a couple of things. So, you know, just to, to kind of be clear, what we're talking about here is the comp plan. So this is just a future land use guide. This is, this is your statement of why you would like to see development go, and this is what kind of development we'd like to see there. So it's no, it's not a, it's not zoning that comes next in the stage where you would then-
Correct.
Zone something. So then, the question then being, if we rezone, if something's, the comp plan matches it, whatever they, they want to do, and then the zoning either existing or is rezoned to match whatever, wherever it is they want to do. Then I think what I hear your question, Dr. Horton, is, okay, you, you clear those two hurdles, and then what if they just still don't have the necessary utilities? And my response, and I think Mr. Hughes would probably have something to weigh in on this too, would be, first, you know, if there is a rezoning necessary, at that stage, you're going to get a report from staff that says, you know, whether or not utilities are available, or whether or not there's an acceptable plan for utilities. Um, and that would weigh into your recommendation and the board's decision-making as to whether or not to rezone it, if utilities are there. Um, conversely, if the, if the zoning's by right, then, then like any other builder, if you, if you want to do something, you need to figure out a way to supply it with utilities. And Mr. Sheeble can probably speak to some of this, and there are some obligations that we connect certain things to water in certain instances and things like that, but generally, you're going to need to, to demonstrate to the county that you can access the necessary utilities, and that would happen as part of the planning process, um, and part of the rezoning process before any rezoning decisions made. I'm not sure if that answers the question, or if you have something to add, Mr. Hughes?
So we're, we're sort of, when we get, I mean, we're, when we get to the stage where we, where we approve an application, we approve something, we're saying, you know, we've come to some type of plan where we can provide necessary infrastructure.
Not necessarily. When you're looking at the zoning application, it's a great question. But, you know, what a rezoning application is looking at is whether you think the use is appropriate in the area. Um, and then subject to, if it's a rezoning, you look at, and a conditional rezoning, say, okay, is this use appropriate? Do we need, you know, if, if it's not appropriate by, you know, without any other restrictions, has the applicant submitted proffers that, that allay any concerns I have? And I think, you know, given these proffers, I think the use is appropriate. Whatever it is they're planning to do there is acceptable to the county. And that's a separate consideration to the, the, you know, development of the property and getting the appropriate approvals to get water and sewer utilities. But that is, when you're looking at what's appropriate there, it's a relevant consideration, right? You could say, well, I don't know that this is necessarily appropriate because I don't see that you have made an adequate plans to get the utilities you need to even do what you want to do. So why would, you know, it's a sign of an impossibility consideration. Like, why would we approve this type of use if, if you can't get the utilities you need to do it? But they are, at the end of the day, two separate considerations. Zoning is looking at the use, and then you'll have different building, you know, code requirements to say, do you have water in order to get your certificate of occupancy and things like that? And that's, that, at that point, it's outside your purview.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, um, I know we were speaking a lot about the water, and I think in one of our last meeting, uh, previous meetings, uh, Mr. Sheeble had an opportunity to speak about water going to that area, and I think he indicated that we, uh, the county was in excess of water. But I'll let him speak more about that if time permits. And then I also would like to at least hear from, um, the developers to really see what their thoughts are in, um, um, to address some of these concerns that the citizens have.
All right, so, so noted. Quick question, Mr. Hughes. The Carmel Church Station is owned in one, I believe, correct? Or?
Is a-
Because, and the reason I ask is I saw something with a chart on it of the Carmel Church Station with, uh, a data center on the same property.
So the, the Carmel Church Station is a planned use development rezoning, and it has its own set of zoning guidelines and uses. And so there are industrial uses allowed within that project. So it's not zoned in one?
Right, I understand that. And theoretically, if Mr. Thompson wanted to abandon the train station, he can make the entire property data center property, could he not?
Yeah, let, let me, let me be clear, the, the train station is one component of that project. So if you look at, on the map there, that entire area in that dash line is Carmel Church Station.
Yes, sir.
So the, the possibility of a rail station there is a very small component of that entire project. They have come in and asked, submitted a rezoning application for what is known as the land bay A within that project to allow, um, data centers to occur on a portion of that land bay. So if the owner decided, okay, I want to shift from a traditional neighborhood development, uh, T and D style project to a more technology-centered project, then they could do that with some amendment of the proffers to, to make that occur. And not have to rezon the property, would just have to amend, the proffers would have to be amended to deal with some of the phasing, and that's essentially what the proper amendment is about now on that project. So the, the short answer to your question is yes. But I felt like it was necessary to, to outline that it's not zoned in one, and they don't have to do a rezoning to allow data centers on the property now.
Very good, thank you, sir. That's what I thought. Mr. Sheeble? Mr. McKenzie, I apologize for not introducing you as our county attorney because you were out of my line of sight behind the screen. Mr. Sheeble?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, to try to answer Mr. Young's question, Caroline County currently has about half a million gallons of reuse water that's available from our wastewater treatment plant. Currently is being discharged to the Polcat Creek. Um, and we also have, with the two new wells coming online, about half a million gallons of potable water that's available. So between the two, there were around a million gallons today. Uh, the Board of Supervisors has directed me to drill some additional wells. Uh, knowing that the Rappahannock River Project is our long-term project, it's going to take some time to get there, we still need an interim project, uh, and that's really drilling wells. Right now, we are limited to, everything has to be, uh, west of I ninety-five. We're outside of the, uh, eastern groundwater management area. So those are areas that are very sensitive, um, there's some issues with groundwater levels in there. Um, so we've been limited really to, uh, everything west of I ninety-five, which is bedrock wells. So, um, we've been fairly lucky, uh, getting some of, of the deeper wells. So right now, we've got a goal to drill additional wells and to find an additional million gallons a day. million gallons a day. As, as you guys are planning and trying to figure out how to move forward, you know, it's not, we drill everything and we have all the capacity available as these projects are typically phased and many years of over that. So our goal is to keep up with the development and spend our money wisely. As we are looking at rezonings, we're constantly going to the developers as they're coming through and, and trying to develop that project of them bringing the utilities to the site at their cost, them being able to possibly provide well sites on the property that we could actually use to drill additional wells to bring sewer to the site. So those are things that we put those burdens back on the developer, developer so that the citizens or the rate pairs of the utility system aren't paying for those costs. I don't know if there's, if I've answered all those questions adequately or you have specific questions?
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Sheeble. What impacts would the data center have on the local wells or, or the county wells?
So it, it really depends on the particular data center. We've got a rezoning now that says in two years, they want 200,000 gallons a day. Four years later, peak, I should say, four years later, another, or two years later, so four years out, another 200 and then another 200 after that. So 600,000 gallons a day. We've got another data center that just needs water for flushing toilets and drinking. So they don't need much water at all. So it really depends on the technology that they're at. Some of the, some of the data centers have zero carbon footprints that they're trying to meet. In order to do that, they have to use water to really reduce those carbon footprints. So it depends on who's actually there. It depends on whether you've got a developer that's actually developing. This particular site on Jericho Road, right now, it's, it's, there's, there's certain people they're looking at to be able to use those facilities. They're telling them there's a maximum of 600,000 gallons a day. It could be that it could be an all-electric facility that's going to use cooling there. We don't have that information. So we're going to try to meet those demands as, as the board and you all approve projects and trying to meet those demands and working with them so that they understand our capabilities and what we can do.
Thank you. One other observation. What is, what, what is the county's recourse for, to say in the Western District? A lot of folks up on it in the Western District have half acres of land, quarter acres of land, maybe, you know, some of them may have one acre of land. If their well in septic fail, what do they do, what do they do at that point? What's the county's obligation to be able to assist those individuals? Because we got quite a few of Jericho Road and other places in the Western District.
So if there's a water and sewer line and they have a failure, they're required to connect to the county's line. The county has not, up to this point, forced anybody to connect to a water or sewer line as we're expanding in new areas. We ran a water line up Route One. We did offer a reduced rate of $2,800. County was, at the time, was charging $8,000 for a water connection. So we reduced that down to $2,800 to encourage people to connect, but there was never a requirement to do that.
Sure, thank you. But I guess my, my, my concern was, I live on acre land. If my septic, well in septic fail, then that means I would have to purchase additional land, move somewhere else in order to be able to have well in septic.
If you are not near the utility system.
If I didn't have utilities. So with the utilities going forward, that would benefit the citizens, is correct?
The ones that are, so sewer, the requirement is, is when you're within 100 feet, your property is within 100 feet of the sewer line, water is 400 feet.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I back up to something you said earlier? You said something about developers drilling wells on their own property. Did I hear that correctly? Or you're talking about deep water wells?
So they could profit to drill wells and turn them over to the county. Typically, what we're looking at is they would provide property for us to be able, that would actually be owned by the county. So if there turned out to be an unacceptable well site on the properties. So those things that we've looked at to actually drill on the property and then that could be turned over to the county if they were actually production wells.
Yeah, thank you. That's kind of what I was looking for earlier in our discussion. I just wanted to know if that is possible. I mean, at this point, we don't know that that would happen, but.
And you had made a comment earlier just to, to help understand that. So we do have a 35-mile transmission line that will go from the Rappahannock River to the Comer Church area. That will be raw water, so it will not be treated water. So there'll be nobody that'll be able to be able to tap on that line, nor will that create any increased development pressures because there's a line there because it would be raw water.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's in my district. I know where the tap is. We don't have a permit for it yet and it's pretty far.
I meant the 35 miles, as that line comes across, 35 miles across the county. Typically, if we were to run a, a potable water line, it does increase pressures along that water line and/or sewer line for people to be able to develop. But this is a raw water line and will not be able to be tapped at all.
Okay, so would that be the first stage of the permit or that's a different permit?
Well, so there's a couple of things. That's the project. So the project, there's, the stages are first is, in order for us to even start, we have to have a permit on the Rappahannock River to withdraw the water. That's the first step. Second step, along with that, we've had to look at places for a possible water treatment facility where that would go. We also had to identify routes of where the water transmission line would be. So all that's been done, but that has not been permitted. This would strictly be the permit right now that we're working for, that to have the allocation to even withdraw water from the river. Once that's done, if the board were to say go today, the next thing we'd do is start design, laying that out, and then we would start working on easement acquisitions to be able to do that. And then we could, and start working on the water plant design. So we'd intake design, water plant design, 35 miles of the water line. All that would be going on, acquiring properties. And then somewhere two and a half to three and a half years, once that's done, we would then start the construction of the project. And that's probably another three to four years to get the construction done.
Yeah. And, 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 you know, we're running out of time tonight, but sometime in the future I want to hear more about that because, you know, a large part of it is in my district and of course it's going to affect at least two other districts. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeble.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
You know, we're putting all this in front of us. I look at it, hearing on for the citizens of Jericho Road and before we make a.
There will be a public hearing at our next meeting, I believe it is, when this matter comes up to us.
Yeah, we, we were just discussing that and thought this, the perfect kind of transition to that, Mr. Minor, which is, you know, right now, we're in a work session so staff can generally present some of this to you. And as was alluded to earlier, you know, the posture of this is that your recommendation of denials went up to the board. There were some revisions to the comp plan boundaries and the board sent it back down to you to look at those revisions again. And just from a legal standpoint, in order for you to make any kind of recommendation back to the board, right? To say, we, we, we recommend approval of the new, of the new boundary or recommend denial of the new boundary, in order for you to, as a body, say anything back to the board, you need to schedule a public hearing on the amendment, conduct the public hearing, take public comment, and then you can make a vote on a new recommendation. You know, the, the only other alternative is to basically not take any action whatsoever on this and leave it as your prior vote and, you know, and then your inaction will be your, your statement to the board to say that the Planning Commission hasn't done anything further. So, you know, and, and I'm not, it's not clear to me that that's what the board was looking for from you. So, you know, a public hearing on a revised map is the only way for you to make a recommendation on whether or not you think that revised map is a good idea. And that would happen at the next meeting. And that would be the time where the public will have the opportunity, like any other public hearing, to come and make statements for or against whatever that proposal may be.
We're just not at that stage at this point.
Right, this is, this is a work session scheduled before your regular meeting to try to take some time so that you're not rushed to, to look at the maps and kind of get you primed and, and get, you know, I think it would be nice during the regular meeting for you to, to, just like anything else, I think we've got a text amendment that's on the agenda for the same thing, for you to, to direct staff by motion whether or not you, you want staff to advertise this for a public hearing. Because we do need a direction from you on that as well.
So, sir, wouldn't it be advantageous for us to, at least the board, to hear from the applicant on this?
Yes.
So, yeah, we could be better educated as well?
I think, and I, and a public, the public hearing would be, that would be the time, okay, to do that.
Okay.
So again, another reason, you know, that, that it sounds like you, Mr. Young, would be supportive of setting this for public hearings, that it will give you the opportunity to hear from, from anybody, the applicant or people in opposition, anybody that wants to talk will have their three minutes to talk.
Because we do want to hear from the applicant again.
And, and just to be clear, we have not set this for an agenda. So part of the, tonight was determined what the next step was going to be. So if the commission chooses to set it for an agenda for public hearing, then we'd need that direction tonight as well.
Do you need a motion or would that come at our regular meeting later on?
Yeah, I would, I would add it to any and all your regular meeting. And, and just like, I think we have a text amendment that you want to add, this advertise, we'll, we'll add it, make a motion to amend your agenda and, and we can address it then.
That's what I thought. Thank you. All right, commissioners, it's now 6:00 PM. We still have our organizational meeting to carry on with. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Talk with electronic meeting? You would need to close the.
When, when, I didn't think, well, yes, that's what I'm talking for, is closing the work session.
Yes, there's one thing that I, or maybe two things. You, you go ahead, Mr. Hughes. Or do you want? Yeah. Yeah, just to, so it, just today, this is a little bit of housekeeping, but we're all here and it's kind of the point of a work session. We have one commission member who was ill and couldn't attend tonight and asked about participating remotely. And in order to do that, the commission needs to adopt under FOIA an electronic meeting policy. The board has one that we adopted during the pandemic. And it, you know, that law changes over the course of the years and we go through and update them and renew them. And I have prepared one for you. And I don't know whether Mr. Williams even want, is able, feeling up to attending, but it was one of those catalysts to that bit of housekeeping. So I do have the policy for you, but it was just prepared today. So obviously you haven't had the time to review it. It's a pretty routine document. It's required by Virginia FOIA for you to have it in place before you can allow a member to participate remotely. Since we have a half hour, I'm happy to go through it with you now so that you can take it up during your organizational meeting or I can circulate it to you. You can read it at your leisure and, and we can take it up at another, at another meeting. It is, it's entirely up to you, but I just thought, because I'm at the podium and we got a little extra time, I'd, I'd lay those options out for you.
Should we take it up not during this workshop, but during the beginning of our organization?
That, that is when I think you, it would be, you know, just like your rules of order, it would be kind of routine, but I didn't want to lay a document in front of you with you, it's a four-page document. I didn't want you to vote on something you didn't have a chance to at least review and understand. So, you know, it's up to you. If, if you want to vote on it in the organizational meeting at 6:30, I can walk through it with you right now and, and explain it to you. Or I can give it to you now and we can, you know, you can take it up at your next meeting. You don't have to do it at the organizational meeting, but if you wanted to, that would be an appropriate time.
Yes, our, our regular meeting is starting at 6:30 and we're, we're trying to get the organizational meeting done now, I believe.
Oh, I think that, that'll happen, that'll, that'll, at, at 6:30. Yeah.
All right. Good enough.
As a short, the only I would, my suggestion would be is take the document tonight and then put it on a future agenda and not vote on it tonight.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably what we'll do, Mr. McKenzie, is just take it and vote on it next month.
Yeah, I'll, I'll circulate it and you can enjoy it. It's a, it's a fun read, but just by way of an overview, it's a, it's all, what that, what this document is doing is under the Freedom of Information Act, any public body, including the Planning Commission or the board, can now allow its members to participate remotely in certain instances. Of course, any member who's ill or awake can, can log into YouTube and watch, but, but in certain instances, they can actually, you know, connect via Zoom, join the discussion and vote remotely. And in order to have that ability, you have to have a policy in place that meets the requirements of FOIA. So what I'll be circulating to you is that policy and it addresses remote participation, how it happens and what the procedure is for it. And it also addresses those circumstances, which I hope we never encounter again, but if we do, when you're allowed to conduct a meeting completely remotely. And that can only happen when there's a, a state of emergency declared by the governor or a local state of emergency. So hopefully that happens in much rarer instances, but that's included in the policy as well. So that's what you'll see in the document you get.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Hughes?
No, if, if the commission has exhausted their questions relative to the land use and comprehensive plan, no, I don't have anything further.
If I may, there's a certain attorney who is about to climb the walls and I would be, have her come forward, please, if she has something she would like to say. Yes, sir. Should I do that now or just wait for the?
Relative to, to what? We have something on the agenda that that attorney represents, so.
So we should not do that then?
Then, then, no.
No, not, not if it's beyond the work section. No.
Right, well.
Anything else, Mr. Hughes?
I don't have anything else, no.
Commissioners, anything further for consideration for the workshop? Is there a motion?
I may make a motion that we close the workshops, work session.
It's the second. Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by, I'm, I'm going to give it to Mr. Minor and Mr. Weber since they can both tie it on it. Motion has been made to adjourn, properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes are a majority. The workshop is closed.